Charles Durin.
Four.
Kathleen Sarno.
Four.
Peter Falk, four. Ronald Gregory.
Four.
Motion passes.
Don't get to vote?
Yeah.
Oh, Charles Land.
That's what I was. Motion passes.
You can vote.
Five.
Twice if you want.
Five, zero, zero. Okay, moving on, staff report, town attorney.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The town attorney came up with a last-minute family obligation, and he has given a couple of dates where he can make it.
Oh, okay, I, we got the email.
Okay.
And I thought he meant that he was here, but that he couldn't do the executives. Okay, executive session then for, he wanted, for what date?
Well, he's saying it could be either the 22nd or February 5th.
Is that our next meeting?
Twenty-second is after the workshop. You have a workshop next week on the 15th, regular meeting on the 22nd.
Right.
And first, regular meeting on February 5th.
What do you want to? What's your desire?
Regular meeting on the 25th.
Twenty-fifth, yeah?
Okay.
Twenty-second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I have to go on the agenda?
Regular meeting.
I'll thank him for the email, and I sent it out to all of you on the Morgan case.
Mm-hmm.
And that was interesting. Also, I thought there was something else in there, all right. Zoning enforcement officers, any questions? I'm sorry, for the town attorney.
No.
Zoning enforcement officer.
Good evening, Ginny Higley, zoning enforcement officer. I know you have my report. It's been busy up in the office, lots of stuff going on. We're taking a team approach with the few people that we have, just, I'm sure you already know this, but Bob Santinella and Andrew Timmerman are property maintenance enforcement officers. And Andrew's been out since September, and Bob is jumping in and doing a lot of, some of the zoning things. He's going out and assessing an issue and then taking pictures and bringing them back. So, he's been very busy, and I am appreciative of his help. I've been doing a lot of counterwork and letters, and, you know, so, is there anything that I can help you with?
Just thinking that, you know, if people are watching on TV, maybe you could just
give some highlights of what's going on.
Oh, sure. The Planning and Zoning Commission is very busy these days. We have a lot of questions on a few of the newer items. Let me think for a minute. It's, I've been getting a lot of solar, and some of the things are going back for redesign and coming back, and I'm passing, and they're passing. We have questions on, I'm drawing a blank. We get a lot of telephone calls on, can you, they want to come into Enfield, and, you know, what do they need to do to build something on their house? I get a lot of counterwork with contractors, they want to come in and builds, build something for their customers, and I work with them on that. What was I going to say? Oh, for Valentine's Day, you might be interested. There's a good probability that a lovely little chocolate shop, Candy Chocolate Shop, will, you know where Espresso is on Enfield Street? She's looking to open up there. So, because it was retail to retail, you might not see her, but she will be open soon.
We haven't had something like that for a while.
Mm-hmm, I know. It fills the void. Espresso was very good, and it was just unique enough so that you could always go get something, and nobody else had it. So, I've missed it, and I'm glad to see that it's being utilized again.
Okay. Any other questions?
Go ahead.
I have one.
Something else?
When you're out, do you stop in if you see a violation? Because a couple of weeks now, I've seen some around town, which I am bothered called in, because I want to see what the enforcement's been.
The way it's set up now, I don't go out. If a call comes in, or if someone is out, I shouldn't say someone, Bob Santinella's doing the legwork, and if a call comes in, we ask him to take a look at it.
So, it has to be by a call?
Well, we have also the spreadsheet that Barbara maintains, and I bring her.
I'm just wondering how, where it goes, because...
It should go, the procedure normally...
It goes, and it's like, and I think it was with Peter, with a sign outside, wants a board. One sees it, and it goes and goes, and nobody does anything about it, and it just, well, okay, it keeps going.
Yeah, there's a package store in town that's had a banner up for Thanksgiving and Christmas with no permit.
Well, what I'm hearing, you need a personal complaint. The problem is, I used to call you, and I used to call some of the others, but we've been told we aren't supposed to call you people anymore.
Oh, really?
And...
Well, I would...
We're supposed to call, what?
Quick fix or something?
Well, I don't know.
You can contact Courtney or myself.
Yeah, see, that's the problem. So, you have to go, and by the time it filters down, it's a pain.
Well...
Basically, it's forget it.
I have...
It was much faster and quicker the other way.
Yeah.
If I'm out, I'll use my cellphone and call you, done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
I didn't know that was the procedure. It's been a while since I've been working with you.
And I've seen several, there's a car dealer with the long flags fluttering away, and that's been going on for about a month.
Yeah.
There's a sandwich board on Elm Street, which anybody passing by that works for the town should have seen. There's a lot of stuff going on, and I just wonder, you know, if you're not going to enforce it, there's no sense, you know?
Well, I...
And you make it more difficult for the commission to complain or point out things as we're around town, it's not going to get done either.
Well, then, I'd suggest you see Peter and Courtney and discuss it.
Well, I've given my opinion about it before, and some of the other commissioners have.
And I also jump in and say that, you know, Ginny is wearing two hats right now.
I know that.
She's working as the...
A lot of times, I just call in Barbara, and Barbara just send it off to wherever it goes. It just makes it a lot more difficult if you've got to start with somebody elsewhere.
Okay, well, when I see one, I do do something about it. You know, I do go in, you are correct, when it's seen and it's during business hours, it's always good to go in and talk to them first.
Oh, yeah.
Give them, or call them.
Absolutely.
And give them a few days to either come into compliance or take it down.
Absolutely.
That is the procedure.
It's not right to one businessman to have somebody else doing it, and it keeps going, and nothing's, nothing's done about it.
Well, let's hope within the next month or two, it gets to be a little more, a little quieter.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
And the reports are very good, as usual.
Oh, thank you.
And thank you very much, Ginny.
Okay. Well, I'm here to serve, so if you need anything...
Okay, no, thank you very much. Blight, you have the December report, and a lot of this comes back from, you still have grass and weeds, and that, of course, is taken care of now. Any questions for the Blight officer, or the Blight people through, I don't know, John or Peter? Okay. Takes care of that. Intram planner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
At the, I think it was the last meeting, there was an approval of, an amendment for administrative approvals, if you remember.
Can we take that up when we get there?
Well, actually, this is already passed. I have an issue that I would just like to discuss with you, and it's a quick fix. And at that, at that meeting, it was approved without specifying an effective date. And so, we've researched, you know, when the publication date was, and how long the appeal period was, and we're recommending that you, at this meeting, recommend an effective date, or establish an effective date of January 6, 2015.
What is the project you're talking about?
Yeah.
No, this is, this is the amendment on administrative approvals that was passed by the commission.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, what do we do, well, when do you need the date? Fifteen days?
Well, generally...
Passed last time.
Yeah, generally, you should do it the night that you approve.
That's right.
Approve it. And so, we're playing catch-up ball on this one, and so, we need to have that date so that we can submit it to the town clerk.
So, that's what I asked, what do you want? What date do you want?
As I said, January 6, 2015 would be the effective date.
Yes, yep.
I'll make a motion to...
2015?
To change, to make the effective date 1/6/2015?
Yes.
Second.
Motion's made second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, take the roll.
Charles Durin.
Four.
Kathleen Sarno.
Four.
Charles Land.
Four.
Ronald Gregory.
Four.
Peter Falk, four. It's five fours.
Five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, the second item has to do with a, an entity called Lenity Architecture, who are out of Portland, Oregon, and they've contacted the office twice about the possible development of an assisted living facility on 18.8 acres of land owned by Ward Manor, LLC, and that's located on Middle Street and Hazard. It's in the BP zone and the R-44. If you recall, there's a strip of R-44 along Middle Street. The initial plans are for approximately, I think it was 124 units, including a dementia Alzheimer's ward, and there's, there are considerable wetlands on the property. They're at very, very preliminary stages. They have not even delineated the wetlands, or done any, any kind of work, concept work. Property will be a challenge to develop, but I just wanted to make you aware that they appear to be getting ready to move forward with some of the initial planning.
I hope they go in order that we've established that it's wetlands first?
Yes.
Okay.
We definitely recommend that.
All right. I know they've had, others have had problems, I guess, with the last one went to ZBA first. Not this company, another, and that's, and in the past, they've gone to ZBA first. I think Fire Station did that, and we tried to stop ZBA first. They come here first, and ZBA last?
ZBA's supposed to be first.
The procedure established was wetlands first, here, and then ZBA.
They would have to go to wet, there's so many wetlands out there, it would make sense for them to go there first, before they came here, so...
Is there a problem?
I was just saying that I think we're having a little bit of disagreement about the order. ZBA is generally first, especially when it involves a variance.
They don't do that anymore because of some of the problems that had developed. Peter can fill you in, but that's, that's what this group, and I think earlier, had decided with ZBA.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, you may be faced with an application with certain violations within it, and you would be unable to act on it, because ZBA has not previously corrected them by granting a variance.
What happened, I don't want to get into full discussion on this, so that we can fill in, but it started, I guess, with not just the Fire Station, but there was, it was between parking at the Fire Station, and the ZBA gave, gave a waiver, or no, didn't. And they came back here with that, and we said, "You can have the parking," because we waived at the time, allowed something different, was with the plantings, Peter. But, I mean, that's what came up, and ZBA got upset, and why did you come here first? Because you didn't need it. And then it got into legally and all this, you can check it out, but it was established then that they, they went wetlands, which they have to anyhow, here, and then ZBA. But, move on, please.
Okay. And I just want to follow up on the Lenity Architecture issue, because there was a question raised when I was examining the regulations, and they were examining them as well. If you remember, assisted living facilities and continuing care retirement communities are allowed in R-33, R-44, and R-88 zones, but also in the business professional zone. In the residential part of the regulations, there's Section 4-40.1, which gives some detailed standards for continuing care communities and assisted living communities, but there is no mention of the applicability of this section to any assisted living facility that happens to be located in a, in a BP zone. So, the question was, and there's, and there's no cross, no, you know, I looked carefully at all the footnotes, you know, you have to in these regulations. I don't see any cross-referencing between the two, anything that suggests that that section would apply to a, a project in the BP zone. So, I'm bringing this to your attention. It may be a call that you may have to make, you know, that the intent of the regulations, at the very least, was that an assisted living facility and a, you know, and a continuing care facility should be subject to certain standards, and why should there be standards in one district and not in the other, when it could be the very identical facility?
I don't understand what...
You can put this on the list at the end of...
Oh, yeah, I don't, I'm just, you lost me, because I can't read and follow you, and if you're getting into something complicated, I like to have it in front of me so I can read it and see it, and I...
Well, it just, it was raised today.
We'll put it down as a planning meeting thing, and we'll talk about it at the meeting.
Okay, we will do that.
That's going to be a tough one to develop. There is an awful lot of wetlands there. Like you said, it is going to be challenging for them to develop that.
Yeah.
I think if, I think they should be concentrating first on those wetlands, before they even think about getting to us. Because I think that's going to be their biggest hurdle, so, but, anyway.
Well, I appreciate you telling me which, which things we need to push off to further development. I just want you to know.
Well, I think, what we've tried to do, if you have a problem with that, really, we should take this up at one of the planning meetings.
Yes.
Because I can't follow you, and I'm thinking of the other meetings I've got here, and you're filling our heads with all this. I, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's not the time to do that.
I understand. Okay, third one is, I'm not sure if you've heard about this yet, I want to make sure that you did. There's been a proposal for a goodwill store in the Big Y Plaza. There is a pad on the very north, now at the end of the building.
Right, we allowed that several, maybe a year ago.
Yeah, and what they're proposing is to, is to basically create a freestanding building, but, but with the intent that the space between the pre-standing, the freestanding building and the existing plaza be filled with another use at a future time.
Well, wouldn't that, here again, is something that we should be discussing when, at a planning meeting, or...
I'm just giving you information about what's coming down the pipe at this point.
Okay, well, that's all, all right.
Okay. Okay, and the final one is that there is a mobile station on Elm Street, a budding on Phil Square, and they're proposing some sort of renovations. We don't even know the nature of them yet. We're having a first meeting with, with the applicant's representatives on Monday, and we'll...
They were supposed to put up a trailer. When did we allow that? And I haven't seen that gone up yet. That was at the same time as the mobile station on Middle Road was being taken care of. In fact, it was the same people.
They were doing some remediation work.
Yeah, but there was supposed to be a whole new trailer in on that one on Elm Street.
Right, it is, obviously, they haven't got to it yet.
Okay, but that, that probably should be tied in, if they do anything, is find out what's going on with that.
We'll do that.
Okay, and that's, that's all I have for my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the planner? Okay. Where is it? I don't have that participation. Yeah, I know, but they put that... I'm missing my memo again. Somebody keeps removing it anyhow, try to oblige it. At this point in the meeting, we welcome comments and concerns from the public, providing that nowhere is elsewhere on the, items on the agenda, or any item that is an open public hearing of the commission. Is there anyone who'd like to address the commission at this time? Anyone? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Alec Myers. I'm here representing Solar City Corporation. I was curious if this would be the appropriate time to make a comment in regards to something that we have been experiencing with the zoning department?
Go ahead, yes.
We would just appreciate the commission's interpretation on Section 8.80.15, roof-mounted small solar energy systems, specifically in regards to multiple mounting planes.
Mm-hmm. Actually, this has come up before, and just going on, and some of the others will go along. It is as it is written. Basically, we've been asked that several times, and as it is written, is what it is. The others can talk about it if they want.
Are you asking for these regulations to be changed, or...
We would just appreciate your interpretation of the regulations, specifically in regards to multiple mounting planes, because our current interpretation of these regulations, there is no mention of multiple mounting planes being excluded.
Yes, it is. I think it's, it's, and I don't have the regulation with me, in front of me, but it does say, when, that was asked, and...
I don't have my book either.
Do you have it?
We're going to get it out now.
Okay. I know this has been asked before, and the answer was, it's one. And in fact, I don't know if you're the one, somebody brought up the possibility of one being mentioned, partial on a garage and partial on the house.
We do...
The answer was no. That was asked of the commission several weeks ago.
We do experience several potential proposals that would have multiple mounting planes.
Do you have the page?
So, are you running into issues when you come in for permits, or...
It's page 81.
Page 81?
Currently, yes. We're seeing about a 50% rejection rate, based on multiple mounting planes.
Right, because it's split, they wanted one, we spent a great deal of time touring and going to other towns, checking this out before we wrote this, and people have come back and asked about this. Okay, what's the number? And the answer has, it is as it is written, and not multiple, but... And you're talking about eight, what?
8.80.1.5, roof-mounted small solar energy systems.
So, what is...
Well, yes, it talks of the building, not buildings, there's no plural in there.
Can, I'm sorry, could you...
It says roof shall include integrated solar shingles or panels as a surface layer of the roof, separate flush, separate flush or rack-mounted solar panels mechanically fashioned or on the roof's surface, not plural. There's no roof plural.
So, we, we look at, when it says systems, we look at one system, as it is tied into the singular home, as being one system. So, that being said, there could be multiple mounting planes that are tied into one inverter and running through the existing service.
Why would there be multiple?
Multiple mounting planes, maybe the roof space can accommodate, say, if you break it down, 10 panels and 10 panels, maybe the front and rear side of the home, both facing an east and west direction. 20 panels total can make one system. Whereas the two different pitches, the front and the rear of the home, would be considered two mounting planes.
No, they didn't want two mounting planes, they wanted, that was the problem. They wanted one, and that's why D says configure it in a square or rectangular pattern.
We do have an example of a rejection here.
No, I understand, because we, this was asked of us prior, and the full commission was here, and basically, the answer was, "It is as it is written." And they didn't wish to change it, they were asked if they wanted to change it or modify it. I suppose you can come in and try at some session when we do have you, is at the end of the meetings. Usually, it comes down under other business, or at the end of the, the agenda, to make a proposal to us, or I guess the other proposal is that you can make an application to change the regulations.
So, what happens when you get a rejection? What is, what is...
Shoot, they can't build.
We're looking at downsizes?
In fact, I don't know if you were the ones, I understand, you just got, somebody just got turned down at ZBA. I don't know if that was your outfit or not.
That was not our company.
Because, again, it's the interpretation is what it is.
Okay, just...
And we've been asked by that, because we knew some of this may be coming. You can talk when the full commission's here, but I'm just generally giving you the, what we've had discussions on before. Peter, Ryan?
Is it something we should look at, Peter? I mean, do you think it's worth looking at and changing, or...
Well, I can tell you anecdotally that we are getting, you know, a lot of complaints from residents that they're, they're not, they can't meet the...
The regulations?
The regulations, and it is causing them not to have solar, so...
Is it they can't meet, or the installers can't meet, or don't want to meet?
Well, we just had one today that came in, and due to the, the type of roof style that it is, they can't get a square or rectangle on it, because it's an older-style roof that's pitched like a rectangle, like a triangle. So, it would be impossible for them to put...
Well, that would be a ZBA thing, then, I would think.
Well, they're getting denied from ZBA.
I mean, no, no, but they might not have gone to ZBA. I don't know what the ZBA one was.
And in this case, you know, they, their, their roof on their home is not conducive, however the roof on the garage is, but I believe that accessory buildings are not allowed to be used, so...
Right.
No, that's, that's the same thing, right.
Right, so, so that precludes this person, and I'm not saying whether it's right or wrong, I'm just saying that it precludes that person from doing it. So, it's something that you might want to think about.
I mean, we made these regulations before they actually started putting all these solar panels on and stuff, I mean, you know, and this is a big thing, everybody wants to do them, you know, and I would hate to have to have people be denied, because they don't make that exact, you know, and there are other ways of doing it. I don't know how different it looks aesthetically, I mean...
But those would be the things for them to come in and discuss it with the full commission.
It might be a thing to do, yeah.
But, I'll tell you...
Maybe we can add it on to our planning sessions.
The zoning enforcement officer is doing what she was asked, as she herself has been in here and asked us, because she has had discussions with other, well, maybe you too, I don't know, but has had discussions with installers. And she's come down to us and said, "What do you want us to do?" Now, she's in back, she can tell... Now, she's in back, she can tell, tell you what we told her, or what the commission told her.
Absolutely.
So the only way you is come back and talk with the full commission, but you're gonna have to have some, some actual reasons, not because it's maybe cheaper for you to do it, or it has to be, you know, reasons that...
Maybe if they brought some examples to show the commission of types of roofs that could be problematic to having a certain design.
Chimneys, dormers, stuff like that.
Yeah.
Why we should change that.
You can't put a square or rectangle.
We do have examples with us tonight. I don't know if you're asking.
Well, no, I'm sorry, you'd have to come back, because that's gonna take a long time. We have quite an agenda tonight. You get yourself on the agenda, and you can either do it as an applica, I don't know.
Well, maybe a workshop session would probably be the best.
That would be the best.
Right, yeah.
Set up with Peter then for a workshop session with us.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, okay. But the zoning enforcement officer is doing exactly what we had asked her to do, and she did come in and ask us what we wanted her to do, because she had had discussions with you or others, and she asked these questions, and that's what she was told to do.
Yep. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the commission at this time? Anyone else would like to address the commission at this time? Last call, then moving on, correspondence. You have the Capitol Region, or CROG. Did you want to say this? You have, and that was about it. There wasn't too much this month. Commissioner of Correspondence, anything?
Nope.
Nothing. Bond releases, nothing? Public hearing continued. Special use Dunkin' Donuts drive-through location, eighty-five ninety, ninety-five Rafi Road, BL District Map, sixty-seven Lot 424. George Rafi and Sons, and Jonathan Fries, applicant George Rafi and Sons, the owner. Actually, we have a closing date of tonight, and is the applicant, are you all set, Andy?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard absent, Kathleen Sarno.
Here.
Peter Falk here, Laurie Longy absent, Nicholas Ficus absent, Charles Ladd.
Here.
Ronald Gregory.
Here.
Alan Joynan absent.
Ronald Gregory is sitting in for an absent commissioner. Welcome, and just again for the record, please identify yourselves.
Sure. Attorney Andrew Banowitz, attorney for the applicant.
My name is Andrew Carrar. I am the civil engineer. I work for Design Professionals from South Windsor.
Whoop. Oh, okay. I thought we lost power.
Fuss up.
Okay.
So, as you know, this, I believe this is our third public meeting with, with the commission, and at the last meeting, it was suggested that we go ahead and rearrange a new ART meeting with town staff. So we did so back on December twenty-third. In attendance was John Pajini, Ed Shirley, the fire marshal, myself, and the town engineer, John Kabibo. And we discussed some of the outstanding issues associated with the, with the site plans. Primarily, we discussed the egress drive, the southerly egress drive, and one of the major changes that we made here, and I've talked about it in the past, where we proposed the double lane out, the double lane out, where we had an exclusive right turn lane as well as another lane on the left, which would be the straight and left. We eliminated that and made it into one egress lane. So that's pretty much the, the primary change to the plans that we made, and I can discuss some of the reasons why, but that was the consensus, that that was the best choice, and I believe it, that's the right thing to do. Mr. Shirley had a couple of comments in regards to changing some of the curb styles in front of the plaza to make them a little more flat, the flat curb, just in case his wheels touched upon the curb that we had proposed before. So now if, in case he couldn't make a turn, he'd be able to wheel over some of the curb. And that would be in front of the plaza, as well as this newly-created island that we have in the southerly egress drive. And your plans before you will show that island as fifteen feet by fifteen feet. Subsequent to the meeting, we addressed the comments, and we submitted another fourteen sets of site plans to the town back on, this was a week later, December thirtieth, and those are the plans that you should have before you dated revised to December thirtieth.
Okay.
A couple of things that I believe were requested by the commission, as well as Mr. Pajini, a couple of days ago via email, was to provide you with some cut sheets for the menu board. I know there were some questions about, you know, what it looked like, and I think we were only able to tell you that it looked similar to all the other Dunkin' Donuts menu boards that you see, but I just wanted to submit for the record, and you can just kind of pass this along. I have one color, color copy, of course, you can, you can keep it, and it's pretty easy, very, very recognizable, and I'll forward this to you as soon as I get the other cut sheet I have for the menu, or for the height, the height bar. I remember there were some questions about the height bar. What did it look like?
Right, it was, yeah.
So I'll, I'll give that to you right now. And with that, that's, that's...
The fire on October eighth had some problems, and that dealt with, I don't know if that's been answered. Is memo the October eighth? Okay.
Is Peter out the street?
Yes, yeah, Peter had...
Yeah, we'll look at it.
Yes, then we'll pass him over. Okay.
So the meeting we had was, again, attended by Ed Shirley, a fire marshal, and we believe we've, you know, we've thoroughly discussed the plans.
The memo of the engineering on the twelve-eight also had eight items that weren't addressed. Now, I don't know if those are still in effect or not, that's just in the material that I had had.
Mr. Chairman, I can answer some of those questions.
Okay.
Certainly in the ART, which I attended, Mr. Shirley was completely satisfied with, with everything he saw on the plans.
Okay.
It, you know, it included, you know, for instance, a sidewalk from that rear, rear door near the...
Right.
Okay, that would connect to the back and allow people to pass without actually going into the drive-through lane. There's also all the proper fire lane markings that are shown, that are shown there on the plans. They've also, using their templates, the design templates, were able to demonstrate that the fire lane, that a fire lane exists that meets standards and that can't, you know, and the equipment that the department has can maneuver around the building. You'll recall also that there is a, I guess, a, a bunch of pavers in a triangular shape with a mountable curb that is meant to separate the building that contains the Dunkin' Donuts and, and also contains a ballet school.
You're right.
And also a gymnastics school from the drive-through lane. And so that, that is there as well and meets the requirements of the fire department. That fire lane also continues around the building, separate from, the other building, separate from the drive-through lane, and it's been identified by paint striping, separate from the, the drive-through lane. And so he's completely satisfied with what he saw on the plans.
Okay, the health department, they all set?
There is, there was one outstanding issue with them that we, that frankly, we didn't completely understand, and I don't know, Mr. Carrar, if you've contacted them since.
I tried to. I think it was, it was a, it was a busy time, left a message, you know, I didn't really... So the answer is I didn't have a discussion. I believe, number one, one of their issues was with the grease trap, and I, and I believe that's, that's certainly a, a building department issue.
Yeah, I didn't...
I don't see, I just don't see anything that could possibly be of, you know, from the health department.
Yeah.
I just, no, no comment came out, right?
No, there was no comment about the grease trap. I think the only comment that came out had to do with the use of the side door closest to the drive-through window for the receipt of deliveries, and I'm not sure what their issue was concerning it. But, you know, if you were to consider action on this, I would simply make it a condition that they'd be satisfied in that respect.
Well, there was, yeah, there was a memo of twelve-nine had two items that they were concerned about, and it was a memo from the health department. And I didn't know if they had been taken care of. Let's see, I've got the fire district here. Do you remember, Attorney? The health department?
The two issues were the two that we've just discussed, the grease trap and the door.
Okay. All right.
I think that was just, that might have been just a question about the door, like, where does the door?
Yeah, I think it was just a general question.
Yeah, I just, I just don't understand, again, John Pajini for the record, I just don't understand how it really relates to their role. I think it was more a safety issue, you know, certainly for the fire department, and they were satisfied with it after the changes were made on the plan.
Okay. No, they had, provide a dumpster grease waste barrel if needed on a concrete or blacktop surface. Submit a plan with completed application fee, menu, and equipment specification sheets. NCDHD for review and approval prior to obtaining a building permit. Well, that could take contact the Enfield WPCA for information and requirements pertaining to the FOG ordinance. And those were the, those were the three that I'd picked out here, so I... Well, I guess they'd get that prior, but...
Yeah, that was, that was the December ninth?
Oh, this is, I'm sorry, this is October fourteenth.
October fourteenth.
There was another one in that December, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they participated, you know, since then in the reviews, and they, they have not been raised as issues.
Yeah, these are not in order. Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, you know, just a few issues. I, you know, they've, you know, they modified the plans, and there's just a few issues that I identified, and they're really, you know, sort of minor and can be added to the plans at a later time, you know, through conditions. And one is a note on the plans indicates that all trash recyclables and grease and other waste containers be located within the trash enclosure. That might be a little difficult for, for them alone to, to deal with, because we're dealing with a restaurant next door that also is storing, is storing its own grease in a container outside, and so it's probably gonna need some urging from the zoning enforcement officer that we have an enclosure back there that's meant to consolidate a lot of these things. But, you know, there is a, a stockade fence and a trash enclosure that's large enough to certainly contain any of these things.
Well, that's what we do at several other locations, people combine the usage.
Right, but we don't really have any control over these other uses at this point.
No, no, that's true.
Yeah.
That's true.
It was the intent to...
Right.
To oversize that dumpster pad. That was, that's just what we had kept in mind. There's a bunch of dumpsters back there on the south side.
Well, that would be up to the property owner also, if they wanted to do that just for the aesthetics.
Would they want to?
Well, they, I said they might want to. I said I'm sure they might want to do that.
Right, that was the idea in designing it oversized, was that that could happen.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, there's just a few more issues here.
Well, go ahead. No, is that something that should be in a condition?
I'm suggesting it, to the extent that they have control over, over the trash that's generated by Dunkin'.
Okay.
Okay. Then, then there's another one concerning the height of the vehicle height detections device. At the time we met the last time, they didn't know the height of a canopy that was going to be over the drive-through window, and so that was, it was sort of important to know what that height was that they had to avoid. So...
I think that was nine feet, the, what our architect submitted to us.
Is that on the drawing that just came over, or is that on the, that's on the bar?
I don't think it's on the drawings yet, is it?
It wouldn't, well, that's something, I mean, I could include in my drawing, but the architect or, the architect drawing would have that height detection bar, you know, on it, which I just submitted.
Right, the draw, that it did, it had nine feet right on it.
Yeah. Another issue has to do with the sconces, you know, and we would like to see them on the spec sheets, and the reason why, you know, certainly staff is a little concerned is because the Elm Street Dunkin' Donuts has similar sconces, and they are, they project upwards and downwards, and as you know, we only allow downward projection of light.
Right.
And so we want to make sure that the sconces are modified so that they only project downward. And then we just asked for some canopy designs on the, on the spec sheets. The final one just came up...
Yeah, the Dunkin' Donuts.
Sorry, the final one just came up fairly recently, and Mr. Carrar just mentioned, you know, a new, a new feature that was added at the entrance, and that is the fifteen-by- fifteen-foot island. Reason for that island was really to help align the traffic with the intersection opposite it, and it seems to, seems to do a good job doing that. But now you have, you know, a fairly large island, and you also have a turning radius, you know, here that can't accommodate certain types of vehicles, such as large trucks or large emergency vehicles, so the decision was made that there be a rollover or a mountable, a mountable curb, such as you might see on a, on a roundabout, you know, or large vehicle...
That's what I thought he'd said. Well, is that on the other one in the back?
Yeah, but the question is, the question is, what goes, what goes in the middle of that island? Because that island is going to be run over numerous times. We had talked initially about mulch. I had even suggested flowers, and I just think that both of those things are probably a bad idea, and maybe one of the better things that, that can happen, such as occurs as a matter of design within roundabouts, is some pavers that are, that are flush and then can, can support the vehicles. Otherwise, it's gonna be a continuous maintenance headache.
That probably would be, why don't you just make the island smaller so you don't run over it?
Well, the, the size of the island, size of the island, they did have a small island before. The size of the island was dictated by the need to, to try to align the intersections and help to, you know, separate the ingress and egress there and to, and to push it so that it, it actually was directly opposite. Maybe Mr. Carrar has something more to add about that.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Pajini's suggestion that we have something that somebody, somebody would not really want to drive over, yet could if they had to. So another suggestion I would have there, well, one suggestion was the roundabout. You guys have been to maybe Evergreen Walk down in South Windsor, you go around, and just in case you, a truck can't negotiate, the pavement section, they'd run over some of the pavers. Another suggestion I have, and this is quite simple and might be more aesthetic, would be to simply use the pavers that we're using in the rear of the building, that triangle shape, and this way, maybe you can grow something as well. So that's just another suggestion, and we can, you know, we can work that out with town staff, but the idea is...
Make that a condition and let them work it out with town staff.
Yeah.
We don't have to do that.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's, it's a, yeah.
Well, yeah.
We'll make, we'll try to make it look good.
We'll have you work it with the town staff. We don't have to do that.
Another thing I can submit for the record...
I think probably the fire department or whoever else, probably fire, because they'd be more concerned with the size of the trucks and weight.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Make that a condition.
With the lights, I can give you, here's a canopy light. They point down. Do you want me to submit this, or?
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't so much the canopy lights, it was the sconces that were mounted. mounted on the building, those.
Yeah. You want to take a look?
Well, hand them to him, and they'll be stamped in, and if they, they're acceptable to him, we'll accept them, I'm sure.
So they don't have the, don't have the light, okay, thank you. So there's nothing going up, right? Thank you very much.
Is that one all right, John, those lights?
Give me a second.
Okay. While he's looking at those, is there anything further?
Oh, it actually says, "To light outdoor wall cylinder."
Yeah. They point up, and they, yeah, they're meant to light up a wall. That's, that's what the, the intent is. They don't, they don't cast out, they go up, up and down, directly, up, directly down.
Right, I mean, if they're.
They light up a wall.
Why are they going up?
Light up a wall.
Also.
Why is the wall, why do you want it?
For lighting.
Yeah.
You can see the sign.
Well, it's, you know, it's not, it's, those are not there to light up signs or anything of that nature. They're, they're there for, I guess, aesthetic, maybe aesthetic purposes in part, and safety, you know, and safety purposes as well.
Is that what you want? I thought you were talking, you didn't want them.
Well, I'm saying, well, I'm saying as your regulations require downlighting.
Right.
And not uplighting.
Right, okay.
Okay? So this doesn't, this doesn't meet those regulations, is what I'm saying.
Well, there's your answer.
Oh, the up? Okay, I guess you have to put a cover over it. Yeah. They come with two, two bulbs. Two bulbs, yeah.
If it does meet the regulations, doesn't meet the regulations.
So if the top, if the top bulb is, again, you know, violates the regulations, then that, that bulb just doesn't be put in.
Well, the problem is, I think you should change the whole unit because somebody, somebody coming along later isn't going to know that. So.
Well, look, there's no bulb, I'll put one in.
Yeah, right.
It's in a bulb.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, we received one item of correspondence, so would you like me to read that for the record?
You let me read that, please, I think.
I'm sure.
Peter, do you have that down too, and the sconces then, and the lighting?
I just had large dumpster, and these are just brief notes, the light scones, the canopy design on the spec sheets, and an island landscaping.
We don't care.
Fizzy wop ball, 278 feet away.
Okay. Now, do you have this last one on the lighting that is to be?
It's light scones, that's what I wrote down.
Okay, yeah, but to be worked out with administration too. This is a letter I'll read into the record. This is to Barbara Gavalevich, who is our secretary in the office. And this is from Shelley Oppenheimer, to Keene Court, Enfield, Connecticut. Dear Barbara, I am voicing my opinion regarding a proposed Dunkin' Donuts. I, as a neighbor next door to the plaza, don't want to hear people ordering on the loudspeaker as it will be facing my property. I also don't think that it's a wise idea to put that in the plaza as there are too many children exiting the rear of the dance studio. As the car is now racing through the plaza, it is. I'm not in favor of that Dunkin' Donuts arriving in the plaza. I, as a neighbor next to the plaza, hear enough noise now as it is from the neighbors' roosters that I do not agree with him having. Oh, zoning enforcement's gone already. The roosters should go to zoning enforcement. But, okay. The, the board there, I thought was in back, the ordering board is, I thought was in back of the plaza.
It is.
It is.
I'm sorry?
It is.
It is?
And it doesn't point in the direction of Keene Court.
Mr. Chairman, we.
We measured it.
I'm sorry, okay.
We measured it out on the GIS system, and it's 540 feet from the corner of her property.
Because I thought that's what was one of our concerns, was lighting and the message, the board out there.
Yeah, I think the board is, is going to be, yeah.
On the map.
There it is.
Yes, okay. The board, as shown on the map, is, is right here, and the property that we're, we're talking about is over here. It's, it's pointed diagonally.
So it's in the back of the building, just about before you make the turn?
It's in, in the back of the, the other building. This is, this is the Dunkin' Donuts here, this is the drive-through, and so it's before we make the turn.
Right, you're in back of the, the store, really, I guess it's basically the store.
That's right.
DQ Mart or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, thank you, John. Anything further, John? I hope, I think we have our, Peter has the notes down, so we make those additions to your conditions. Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor against this application? Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor against this application? Yes, sir, please come forward. Name and address, sir, for the record.
David Pino, One Keene Court.
I was just worried about the, sorry, about the, the noise level, and I wasn't exactly sure where the speaker was, because, you know, he measured that out, but it's, we still get a lot of noise on our street, and we're dead end after dead end. We do get a lot of noise from the plaza. And we're just wondering about the decibel levels of the speaker, and how that's going to impact us.
At King's Court?
Keene Court.
Keene.
Keene.
I'm sorry, okay.
Right.
Okay, off of sharp, okay.
Just to the north of the plaza.
Yeah, it's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't know, from, from what I saw online, I mean, I wasn't, I don't know what was done here. The, the speakers are usually like 60 decibels, and I think the noise ordinance was 45 at night and 55 during the day. I didn't know, I'm sure we were operating within those specifications.
They have to, or, right, or they're violation.
Right.
Right.
Right. And I didn't know if there was any thought or consideration given to a privacy wall across the, the boundary so that it wouldn't come across that gully area.
We have a noise ordinance.
Well, that wouldn't be.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I think one of the solutions to this is just simply to make a condition that it must comply with the noise ordinance of the town of Enfield.
Well, we usually make it as a condition, but we can do that.
Yeah, and staff would, would then enforce it.
Well, they would enforce it anyhow, because they, what they do, would do, if they're annoyed by it, would be the proper procedures to call the police department, who I believe is responsible for the enforcement. So that's still the case, Peter?
Or we could, or we can involve this, or we can involve them in the installation right at the beginning and try to nip it in the bud.
Well, that, if they know the decibels, I'm sure they, they'd want to do that anyway.
Mm-hmm.
We've, we've done that with placements of McDonald's when it's up in North End, for example, because it's close to a residential area.
I noticed that he was pointing at the print that would be facing Raffia Road, not Peter.
Yeah, it was hard to see from way, from way back. But, but that's going to be helpful too, I just, yeah, yeah.
It's right, at night, boy, you know.
It carries, really, yeah.
It does carry at night.
Yeah, and in the morning, too, right. I mean, after operating at 5:00 in the morning, and it's summertime, and, you know, it's quiet out, or if it's operating after 9:00 or so, it's, you want to have the windows open and not have to worry about people ordering in your backyard.
We'll put that, we'll have that down as a condition, and so they can watch that when they install it. We'll have a chance as soon as they finish.
And I think the other issue was, was too, just the headlights coming through the trees and into the yard. I mean, because they're gonna kind of, I think they're gonna travel, they're coming in that way, you know, at the liquor store entrance, and coming around. So I think that was.
From Raffia.
Yeah, it was.
Straight back. I don't think they're gonna come right on your, right on Keene.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the commission? Yes, yes, dear.
I'm Sandy Pino from One Keene Court, and I echo everything that Dave just said. In addition to, I also worry about the kids walking to and from school. I've heard that that's been brought up, but I don't know that anything was responded to. I don't know if you've ever driven on Raffia Road in the morning, or in the afternoon, when JFK gets out, but it's really crazy as it is. Middle schoolers, I have a daughter who walks back and forth, and they don't really pay attention to cars. So I'd like to see, like to know what's going on with safety for the kids, or any walker, for that matter. I work in a plaza right now with a Dunkin' Donuts, and every time I drive in, I have to dodge crazy coffee drinkers. So I think that that's a major concern. I talked to Mrs. Collins, the principal of the middle school, and she said she was gonna talk to the safety commission, I guess. But again, I don't know what was from that. So I'm very concerned about the safety.
That would be the traffic safety officer, and he's been involved in these plans.
So will there be a, somebody there in the morning?
I, there isn't now.
I know there isn't now, but there's not a Dunkin' Donuts there now.
No, but the driveway entrances are there, and I, I guess.
Well, I don't think it would be, the town wouldn't put it.
No, no, they aren't, no.
Right.
So the safety isn't a concern?
Well, yeah, safety is a concern, but I, I think there are crosswalks there, or the, the children know that the driveways are there.
One of the purposes of having that island across the large opening was so that you wouldn't have to cross 60 feet of pavement. There, you'd have an island, what they call an island of safety, to be able to avoid, you know, you walk across one part of the opening, get to the island, and then walk to another part. So, and, and I can tell you from being involved in this from the beginning, there's been a lot of focus on safety of people.
Absolutely, that's what's a start.
Yeah.
Yep.
They also put in a designated crosswalk across that driveway entrance. So, any other crosswalk that there's people in it, you have to stop, and same with this.
Well, I've certainly almost gotten slammed into from behind when I stop at a crosswalk, because not everybody follows that rule, unfortunately.
Well, I have too, but that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, we've got stupid people around.
Mr. Chairman, I just, just one more comment about the safety issue, and that is.
Let me finish with the people, please. Anyone else would like to address the commission?
Yes, hi. I'm Dave Villanueva.
Please sit down and name an address.
Dave Villanueva, 6 Bellawood Drive.
Can you spell his, can you spell your name, please?
V as in Victor, I-L-L-A-N-U-E-V-A.
Thank you.
I can't help but, I'm looking at the amount of infrastructure that's gonna go on just to make a Dunkin' Donuts. It's gonna overwhelm the whole plaza, so it's gonna dwarf, all the other businesses are gonna, like, disappear, and they're gonna be dwarfed by this, like, big nation, national thing. So the, the whole small-town feel of the whole plaza is gonna go away. So isn't that like a concern to keep, keep the small-town type of thing? You know, the big billboards, and the big signs, and then the other business, these little tiny things. It's gonna just change the whole atmosphere. So that was, and then the parking seems a little overwhelming. It's, all of that is to accommodate the Dunkin' Donuts, then where do you park if you want to use the liquor store, or where do you want, if you want to use the, the other, three other businesses?
Park, because the, the, some of the islands have been put in for, for safety. We've done some, some changes in, in the islands. The parking for, for the other stores, it still remains, there's no adjustment there.
Yeah, there's quite a, if I can, John Pajini for the record, there's quite a bit more parking than there was previously. In fact, it far exceeds the requirements of the regulations right now.
Okay, it just seemed, just, I was trying to study the plan a little bit, and it just looked like all of that just for, you know.
Well, they've done a lot of work on the plaza for, for this, but it's not, it's not overwhelming, to me, it's not overwhelming the plaza.
Not all that parking is for Dunkin' Donuts, it's for the whole plaza.
Okay.
There was a, what happened was that the original plaza, you know, preceded a lot of the zoning regulations and the standards that we have. So there were a lot of inefficiencies, and some, some problems with circulation that were out there. And so this was an opportunity, you know, to fix a lot of that. Okay, so there's a lot of restriping, and then we're also able to add some landscaping in there, and those islands help to, you know, direct your traffic, direct the, the traffic more safely. So there, you know, again, my, the Dunkin' Donuts provided some opportunities. Another one of those opportunities was to also provide for pedestrian safety within the plaza. For instance, we're having a walkway with a safety barrel in the middle of it, so that people who want to walk into the plaza towards the Dunkin' Donuts can do so in a very wide sidewalk with, with warning, so that, you know, so that they can be safe from traffic as they go from the town sidewalk towards the plaza. Previously, there was just open asphalt.
Okay. Because the only other thing I was thinking of was, wouldn't it be to keep it simple? If you just, if you just eliminate the drive-through and just make a Dunkin' Donuts, and just keep it more simple, more scaled to what the town, what that part of town is like? It's not this big, it's not a big city, it's, it's a small street. So that's what I, I was kind of going in my mind, well, you don't really need a drive-through. You could, you could still have a Dunkin' Donut, you know, and, and still have a little more feeling of like, yeah, this is, this is still a small town. So I thought about that.
But thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else would like to dress, to address the commission? Anyone else would like to address the commission? Yes, you have some answers, or some solutions.
Just one thing, again, for the record, Mr. Chairman, Andy Carr, a design professional. There's one thing I can offer in, in regards to the sound, and I've done this on numerous occasions, not in this context, but before developments actually go in, and actually after the fact. But this relates to sound, to address Mrs. Oppenheimer's comment. And Mr. Pajini suggested that, you know, that, that sound can get tested at some point after they open. One thing that we could, we could offer as the applicants is we, we do, you know, we do sound studies, and they're very simple, and, and this has worked in the past in other communities where all we simply do is we come out with our sound meter, we invite town staff, we invite the neighbors, whoever's interested in this, and we simply take sound measurements, continuous sound measurements. We can do this at night, we can do this during the day, wherever we see fit. We are familiar with the noise ordinances, not particularly Enfield, but my assumption is it probably models the DEP standards that were, I think, written back in, I think, I believe, 1979. They're old standards, but they still hold true. Okay? And I think it is the 45 decibels at night when you have a commercial use casting upon a residential use. And I believe it's 45 decibels after, after a certain hour. So we'd, we'd be holding to this, unless Dunkin' Donuts closes at 10 o'clock. But assuming they would be open after, I don't think they're open after 10 o'clock anyways, are you?
Do we have a.
So we would, we would be using daytime standards. So we know the standards, and that's just one thing I could, we could offer. We would invite town staff, we would invite the neighbors when the, when the, when the menu board is up. You know, you test it, you make sure that you can hear it, you make sure the sound.
Would be a good thing for you to do, but a good for the community.
Give the neighbors some coffee and donuts.
Yeah. And again, everybody's there, they know that the testing is reasonable. You know, we're not turning the speaker down and taking tests. We're turning the speaker to, to a reasonable level. We take the sound measurements at the.
Well, as long as it would be locked at that level, but they, you know.
Uh, you know, we can have one per, we've set it up before. And we've actually invited, even though this is a different situation, we've actually invited planning and zoning commissioners. But this, this would be after, afterwards. So that, that's just something, it's quick, and it's just something we could do.
Okay.
You know.
Good, be good for public relations if you did, but, okay. Anyone else, though you've talked, I've got to really finish with them. Anyone in the audience, again, would like to address the commission? Anyone else in the audience would like to address the commission? Last call to address the. Last call to address the commission. Hearing none. Peter, John, any reason to keep this open? It does have to be closed. We have everything that you, before us, or that you've said?
I believe we do, or we could make them conditions of approval.
Well, we have your list of conditions of approval.
If you're satisfied with that, then yes, we're ready to close.
I'll get the rate number, then I'll call, I'll close Public Hearing 2808. First, I believe we need a waiver. I'm sorry, yeah.
There is the waiver here. I've never seen one quite so big, John, all these different sections.
Oh, well, it...
Do we do waivers anymore?
Do we do waivers anymore?
Certain sections...
Well, we do, yeah, we do.
It's not necessary to approve. And this is different, I'm not sure what all this is. I've never seen it before.
What's that?
All these sections being referenced. I mean, I can read it, but I've never seen it before.
Well, why don't we just reference this date and then let it go at that, the secretary can put it in.
All right, I, I make a motion that the Enfield Planning and Zoning does not, does hereby waive the following requirements pursuant to section 9.10.2(c) of the Enfield Zoning Regulations in connection with Public Hearing 2808, special permit application for Dunkin' Donuts at 95 Raffia Road. And they are, these sections are all listed in a memo from John McGinnity dated December 30th, 2014.
Motion's made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, caller all.
Charles Durin.
Four.
Kathleen Sarno.
Four.
Peter Falk, four. Charles Ladd.
Four.
Ronald Gregory.
Four.
Okay, waivers approved.
Six, zero, zero.
Five, zero, zero.
Five? Right, five. Okay. Five, zero, zero.
Let's see. I'd like to make a motion to approve Public Hearing 2808. The Planning and Zoning Commission does hereby approve this, special permit application of John McFridas and George Raffia and Sons owner for the change of use and related site improvements associated with the establishment of a Dunkin' Donuts fast food restaurant located at 95 Raffia Road, in accordance with the reference plan cited below. I can't read all that. It's referenced in John McGinnity's memo dated December 30th. And there's also a few conditions to be included with that. Currently, there's...
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight listed, and we wanted to add a few more. I'm not sure where they would go in this, on the list.
Well, just add them and they can place them in, or add them in the end, I guess.
Do we wanna put in about the noise ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not sure how to word that, but we wanna be sure that they comply with the noise ordinance.
Okay. Do you wanna mention anything about the, about the sound study that was offered by the applicant?
No, I think he, it would be good for Public Relations that he does do it. I don't know if we have to put it in conditions.
Okay.
If you, if the group wants to, then fine.
So the applicant must comply with the Town of Enfield noise ordinance. And that, so I'm not sure where it goes in the list.
Well, I, I suggest that it go, that it go prior, in the list where it says prior to CO, or prior to stipend of occupancy.
Okay. I'm not sure how to word the one about the large dumpster pad. You'd mentioned that as an issue. What did you wanna say about it?
About what?
The dumpster pad that'd be utilized by...
Occupants of the restaurant and Dunkin' Donuts.
See, I have it in A here at the very top of the page, it said, "Add a note to the plans which indicate that all trash receptacles and grease and other waste containers," and I would add the words, "under the control of Dunkin' Donuts."
Where are you, what page are you referring to?
I'm on page five of seven, very top.
Okay.
Okay. So it would say, "Add a note to the plans which indicate that all trash..."
Conditions.
"...receptacles and grease and other waste containers under the control of Dunkin' Donuts shall be located within the trash enclosure."
Yep, that's what I said.
Okay.
Exactly what you said. That's the second addition. The third one had to do with the light scones, and I guess the details of that would have to be worked out with town staff.
That's item D on the same page. Item D? No, it's item D. It shows specifications of sconces and sheets that ensure they meet the shielding and downlighting requirements of zoning regulations.
So you don't need that one?
Well, no, it's not there, it's not, it's...
Not a condition.
It is...
It's above. It's other condition. Oh, I don't know.
But a plant should be amended as follows.
Yes, it's under, it's under the amendment of the plan, so the sheets that we have for the record here don't comply, and so they would still have to provide a sheet that shows a downlighting sconce.
Right, that's the next condition, right? You got that?
And that's, that's there already.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, and then another one was the canopy designs on the spec sheets.
I think that's there as well. Show canopy designs on the spec sheets.
Yes, that's E.
That's E.
Oh, so we don't have to write these? I'm sorry, that's part of six.
Yeah, that's part of...
That's all part of six.
Number six on page five of seven.
Okay.
I recommend one, one other one concerning the island.
That would be C, but you have perennial plants in...
Yeah, I know, that's, that's obviously gonna change. I would say, I suggest that perhaps you can say something like this, amend the plans to add, or to require that the 15 by 15-foot island at the south entrance consist of a paving material to be, to the satisfaction of, let's say, the assistant town, or the town engineer, and the fire department.
Right.
Because they're, they're the, they're the ones that I think have to, are more concerned about.
Well, what we do usually is through the planner in consultation with the fire department and engineer.
Okay.
I, I just don't wanna see it paved over like this has happened so often with just blacktop.
That's why I said paver blocks, but I think the suggestion was that, you know, there's all sorts of paver blocks.
That's right.
Same blocks they use in the triangle in the back, just say that.
Well, those, no, those are, those you don't want because those have grass growing in them.
Well, but...
And they may not be able to, you know, support constant traffic with, you know, with semis. So I think a solid block would probably be a, a better alternative.
All right, so C then would, would read, amend the plans to... amend the plans in consultation with the town planner, town, well, engineer and fire For what, the internal of the 15 by 15 island and south entrance?
Or, or to provide a, an appropriate, appropriate pave, pavement blocks, pavement block materials within the 15 by 15 island.
But you're saying that you're using pavement blocks, maybe you could work out something else, and I, just, whatever, what would you call it, the fill-in between the, the curves?
Yeah, again, we don't want just asphalt in there.
No, but I think you work it out between the town engineer and the fire department.
Yeah.
And so what, what, how would you word it, the filling in between the, the curves?
Yeah, the, okay. Yeah, the, yes, the surface of the island.
Okay. Oh, all right, surface of the island.
Sounds good.
Okay, that's fine then. So that takes care of C. Height Detection Service B is, is out of there, so all you have to do is renumber, or realphabetize A stays the same, B becomes C, and D becomes C.
I'm not sure that B has been taken care of. I know it's been stated tonight that it's nine feet, but I'm not sure they're on the plans.
But he just handed you...
Yeah, but that, I think that's...
He wants them on valpays.
Oh, he wants, oh, okay.
Yeah, the height and the, the design of it are two different things.
Okay, so then we all, we have those, all right.
Okay.
So all of those, did we have any others?
Nope, he covered it all.
Okay.
It's the noise, the dumpster, the lights, the canopy, and the island.
Now, what does, what do you, as the commission, wanna do with the, the offering? You want that in there?
I don't think it's necessary, but...
Okay. The applicant have any problem with the conditions? None, okay. Make notice that the applicant said he did not have any problem with the conditions.
All right, I made the motion, did somebody second it?
I'll second.
Motion's made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, caller all.
Charles Durin.
Here, present, yeah, right. Four.
Kathleen Sarno.
I am voting for this, but I have many concerns and, you know, the same concerns that a lot of the public has, you know, mainly, mainly the kids. Because there's a lot of kids in that plaza, a lot of kids walking and riding their bikes back and forth to school. I have concerns about the traffic, I have concerns about the traff, the trash, the lighting, and Mr. Villanova, if I'm saying that correctly, brought up a good point. It's a big building for that size of a plaza, but there's really no reason for me to vote no on it, so I am gonna vote for it, but with concerns.
So you're a yes?
Yes.
Yes, I'm voting for, yes.
Charles Ladd.
I'm also gonna vote, vote yes, but I have a lot of the same concerns that Kathleen had.
Ronald Gregory.
Four.
Peter Falk, four.
Five, that's five, four, none against, no abstentions, motion passes. Commission finds the application complies with the requirements of the Enfield zoning regulations, specifically articles nine and 10, and finds the requirements of a 10-foot, 10-foot landscape strip around the building set down in section 10.10.7 AV6 is not intended for, is not intended for changes of use in pre-existing shopping plaza and aren't intended for comprehensive revitalization. I think we've also been able to upgrade some of the safety in this plaza. As planners stated earlier, there were a lot of things that were not done previously. This was built, I believe, before zoning, or at least some of the conditions weren't considered at the time, and we've been able to upgrade a lot of the safety and some of the traffic patterns in the area. I think the concern for the kids and the safety has been with the commission all the way through, starting with the first hearing when the applicant changed the direction of the traffic flow and has also put in some other traffic safety measures in consideration of the dance studio and the karate studio and some of the other movement of the kids in the plaza. And thank you again for the public input and the input of, and the, the work put in by the architects and the designers of, of the project, because they've been in and out and they've worked along with us. I appreciate that, too. It's a totally redesigned.
It's a big plus for tomorrow.
Yes, it is.
It's a 50's design that's going to be upgraded.
Public hearing continued from December 18th. XZA 1413 Propose text amendment, section 4.50.7, modification to swimming pools. We have a memo from the town planner.
Let me do a roll call, please.
Well, yes, do, do a roll call, I guess we have to open up.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard, absent. Kathleen Sarno.
Here.
Peter Falk here. Lori Longy, absent. Nicholas Fick, absent. Charles Ladd.
Here.
Ronald Gregory.
Here.
Alan Dryden, absent.
Okay. This, yes.
Would you like me to explain?
Well, what we did was, because I called Peter because we had a problem, and we followed apparently what the town attorney had suggested to us, but now you think that wasn't...
Well, what, what happened was that, frankly, and I, I think we've, we've changed our process now, but we really should be, and we are now, sending all the drafts to the town attorney and making sure that you make decisions about, you know, what draft you, you feel is, is appropriate before you actually start the process. And the reason why you have to do that is that the moment that you, that you accept the, your application...
No, no, we did that, we, that was done.
Yes, but I'm saying that the moment that you accept the application, it, you're supposed to give 30 days before the start of a hearing.
We knew that, and it wasn't done.
It, it, that's right, that's right. And that's why there's a flaw right now, because, because of that.
But we knew that when we had opened the hearing, and I announced that. That's what I'm telling you, saying, what we did was follow what Peter, the town attorney had suggested to Peter.
Yeah.
That's why I didn't know we still had a problem with it.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, it was something that's, that was unfortunate, but there's also a, a good resolution to this, because frankly, the, the process that is outlined in the statutes is very flexible for a planning and zoning commission. In other words, you don't need a formal application form, you just have to put forward some language, okay? At the last meeting, what you did was you picked a, an alternative, number one, and you also authorized a referral to CROG, okay? And so you've done, you've done two things...
No, we did not, that, that wasn't part of the, the public hearing, but we did that afterwards because...
Yes. No, I know that, I know that. What I'm saying is it was after the public hearing, but that can be, that can be interpreted very easily as being, and I've talked to the town attorney about it, and they didn't seem to have any issue with it, is that can be the start of an application, a time period, okay? And, and so what...
Well, that's what we intended, that's why we did it that way.
Yes, yes, but now, what I'm saying is now you had an alternative that you picked.
Right.
And that can signal the beginning of a process. Now, within, because the statutes say...
Right, and that's why I asked at that time, John, to have that one that we picked sent to CROG.
Right, that's right, which, which means that you're starting a different application. That's what I'm saying. And that means that the application that you have right now is, really can't move forward because you did not submit to CROG within the prescribed time period.
Well, the only difference then is we were told to keep it open then when it came back, so...
That's right. So I think that the solution here is to withdraw, basically...
Well, fine, that's what we do.
Withdraw this application, and then, you know, we've gone ahead, we can do administratively, you know, set a public hearing, and we know you wanna get this done, so a public hearing has been set for the 22nd. There is the requisite 35 days that went to CROG, and there was the requisite seven days that went to all the abutters. So everything is in line for the 22nd.
Well, all we gotta do is withdraw it, that's...
Yeah.
Then close this hearing.
I think, I think you can, you simply withdraw this application and recognize that, that there is the, another application began at the last meeting.
Well, of course, this wasn't, well, this one shouldn't have been put there in the first place, but, okay.
So in the future, we're, you know, this whole situation will be resolved because we're getting, we're getting, you know, drafts upfront from the town attorney, we just got about three more today, and we'll be, you know, running them by you before we start the process.
So what's the new date?
Uh, the new date is 22nd.
February 22nd?
February 22nd.
January.
Or January, I'm sorry. January 22nd.
Okay.
Okay? And so I think the only action you have to take is to withdraw the present application because everything else is...
Make a motion to...
Is in motion.
I'll make a motion to withdraw XZA number 14-13.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, any discussion?
We don't have to mention anything about what the new one's gonna be?
Uh, if you want to acknowledge that, that at the last meeting, you accepted a, a new application, and that the public hearing has been scheduled for February 20...
Well, basically, it's...
22nd, and that the referral...
January 22nd.
January 22nd, I don't know why I'm thinking that. And that the referrals, requisite referrals...
I don't think we need to do that, is, it'll be in the, the legal notice.
Yes, it is.
It's gonna be, just like a... It's gonna be, just like a brand-new thing.
It is a brand-new thing.
Yeah, so-
We're giving it a different number.
Just withdraw it, and don't need to spend an hour on it.
I agree with that.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Was it seconded?
Yes.
Okay.
Charles Durin. Kathleen Sarno.
Four.
Peter Falk, four. Charles Lad.
Four.
Ronald Gregory.
Okay. New public hearings. Uh, public hearing 2805. Secretary, please read the legal notice, and we take the roll.
Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings on Thursday, January 8th, 2015, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following applications. Public hearing 2805.02, special use permit application to obtain beer/wine permit in connection with the Country Diner located at 111 Hazard Avenue. Map number 65, lot number 67, Joe M. Ramaluse III, applicant/chestnut realty owner. And this was published in the Journal Inquirer on December 27th, 2014, and January 1st, 2015. Roll call, Charles Durin.
Present.
Elizabeth Ballard, absent. Kathleen Sarno.
Here.
Peter Falk here. Lori Longi, absent. Nicholas Fekes, absent. Charles Lad.
Here.
Ronald Gregory.
Here.
Alan Dryden, absent.
Commissioner Gregory will be sitting if he absent. Commissioner, uh, applicant, come forward and please introduce yourselves and, uh, make your presentation.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Attorney John Locasello, I'm here representing the applicant, Joe Ramaluse, who is the proprietor of the Country Diner.
Excuse me. Just make sure that you speak into the microphone, please. Thank you.
Or either that, or use the hand one, whichever you prefer. If Joe isn't gonna sit down, uh, he may want to use the handheld.
Thank you.
I have prepared, my office has prepared, kind of a point-counterpoint response to Mr. Pagini's memo, which I'd like to introduce to the record.
Uh, if you have one copyright, give it to them, so they can stamp it in, and-
Well, I have a number of copies, I made 12, actually.
Okay, well, give it to us, but he needs one for the record.
Yeah, thank you.
And one for each of the commissioners present.
Okay.
The purpose of the television, you might want to go over this.
I'm sorry?
I said, for the freak people watching on TV, you might want to go over this, so they know what's in here, too.
Sure. What I've, uh, our office has prepared is a, a count, a point-counterpoint response to the memo of Mr. John Pagini, the temporary town planner. And the purpose is to try to bring some clarity as to our position in this matter, and respond, of course, to Mr. Pagini's comments. We can go through page by page, but let me try to-
Just to know what the, or be enough, that's all.
Yeah, I don't want to parrot the whole thing.
Right.
What I would like to do is just basically say what I think this is about, and it's the same argument, or presentation that I made before the zoning Board of Appeals. This issue is a public policy, public safety issue. That is to say, that the Country Diner has been in existence, I believe this coming March it'll be 20 years. Now, when the zone, uh, that they went into, when they opened the doors, was a business general zone, that was established in 1991. In 2000, the zoning was changed to business local. And in 2001, the zone was changed yet again to business professional. And I say that only to highlight the fact that Mr. Ramaluse and the Country Diner, by virtue of grandfathering in, is now a protected non-conforming use, has been for 20 years now. And the nub of this case is essentially that we're not changing anything. The building's not changing, the use is not changing. When you look at some of the cases that we've cited, and that Mr. Pagini has cited in this, uh, in his memo, particularly the ZACs case via the zoning board of Avon, they, they set up a three-pronged test to, to distinguish between two definitions. Case law in Connecticut has basically refined what constitutes an extension of a non-conforming use, and what is rather an intensification of that use. So with those two definitions in mind, one, of course, would fall into the prohibition against expanding, or non-conforming use. The other does not. The other allows the continuation of an existing use. And what I'm saying simply is that since the Country Diner opened its doors, in I believe March of 1998, is it, Joe?
Actually, actually, today's our birthday, it's 19 years ago today.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well, I steer, I steer corrected. In any case, since opening his doors, the presence and consumption of alcohol has been a constant, by virtue of the BYOV policy. So, the, the use, to use that term, has been consistent and ongoing from the very beginning to the present day. That being, alcohol has been and is being consumed on the premises. So therefore, the use, in terms of the nature of the use, the character of the use, is not changing. That's happening. The only thing that we're changing, and it's the only thing that the zoning board of appeals agreed with us in terms of the public policy safety issue, is we want to take control on the individual who's consuming the alcohol, and give it to where it should be, with the proprietor of the establishment, the town, and the state regulations, which are designed to regulate alcohol consumption. Now, as a matter of public policy, we know why we regulate alcohol consumption, because alcohol consumption inherently has some problems with return, with respect to injuries, and the potential for injuries, and the potential effect on others, not just the individual. So we seek to protect society from these inherent dangers by creating a regulatory overlay which governs the consumption of the alcohol. Now, I think it's reasonable that this commission, as, as the Board, uh, Board of Appeals felt and knew, you have a duty to protect the public, you have a duty to protect public safety. And that's what this case is about. This case is about taking the issue of who drinks what, and how much, and when, out of the hands of the individual, which is wide open, it's kinda like the Wild West, the individual decides, well, I, I can drink two quarts, I don't need to drink one quart, he gets in his car, and we got problems. So, that's the issue. Do we want to leave the control over that alcohol consumption with an individual, or do we want to take it under the wing, the regulatory wing that has been designed to protect the public, the individual drinking, and the individuals, or the individuals that that individual may impact? So, the issue is, it's an existing use, and under the three-pronged test in the ZACs case, the first prong is, is the character of the use changing? The answer to that is no. The second prong is, is, is the use, um, uh, changing the character of, not only the character of the use, but the nature of the use? The answer to that question is no. Why? Because the use is ongoing. The third prong is, is there a significant, a substantial difference between the current use and the use that it may be replacing that impacts the neighborhood? The answer to that is no, because in the 20 years, 19-plus, 20 years that the diner has existed, there's no history of complaints, no one has come forward to complain about what's going on at the Country Diner. I mean, I find it interesting, in fact, one of the sources that Mr. Pagini cites in his memo, and, uh, and I believe it's Professor Tonjro, who, uh, in volume nine of Connecticut Land Union, uh, Land Use Planning, uses a metaphor in, in discussing what's called the Salerni case, which is a case that had to do with, um, uh, a tower, uh, excuse me, it was, let me think here. Basically, what he's, what he said in, in analyzing that case, uh, and I think it's actually the ZACs case, which involved the radio tower, where they wanted to add antennae to the radio tower. The radio tower was already existing, had three antennae, they wanted to add eight antennae. And the issue for the zoning appeals board was, is this an expansion of a non-conforming use? The final and ultimate answer was no, because the use was in existence, and all they were doing was adding to the use. So, it was ruled not an extension of a non-conforming use. So, the metaphor is, if you're gonna have a protected, not, a non-conforming use, which is what the diner became, when it was changed, the zoning was changed to business professional, it became a protected, non-conforming use in the sense that it existed before the zone change, therefore was grad, grandfathered in, it's constitutionally protected, because it's an ongoing business, has been for 19 years, and there could be real problems constitutionally, in terms of due process, and other issues where you try to interfere with the business. So, the business is a protected, non-conforming use, it's much like Professor Tonjro says, bringing a baby elephant into the room, but then through natural growth and progress, evicting it when it grows up, shouldn't be done, and it shouldn't be done in this case. I mean, this case, quite simply boils down to, has it been an expansion of a non-conforming use? And, and the answer to that is clearly no. There's no use that's going on, that hasn't been going on from the very beginning. Now, one might ask, why didn't he apply for a special permit when it was a BG? Or when it was a BL, when he could have done that? The answer to that is, he was a police officer at the time. Police officers and firemen cannot seek alcohol licenses, in a manner of statute.
His partner was also, too, wasn't he?
Excuse me?
His partner was also-
That's correct, that's correct, his partner was as well. So, uh, I really believe that this, this decision, that the commission is faced with, is really one of public safety. I would hope that we could all agree that control over how much alcohol is consumed, by whom, when, and where, should be left in a proper regulatory scheme, and not left to the individual.
Okay. John, anything before, we have, you have anything to add, that, other than what we have?
Sorry, John Pagini for the record. Actually, I, I think Mr., or Attorney Locasello and I probably, um, probably agree, agree pretty closely on most of this. Uh, he's added a lot more, um, you know, meat to the, uh, to the analysis, but what I, what I've done here-
I know, John, we, we have this, I said, do you have anything in addition to this?
No, I just want to point out that I have, I have framed some questions to you based on the research.
Yes, right, that's-
And that was not anything for me to answer, it was for you to answer.
Right. Thank you. Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor or against the application? Hearing none, John, there's no reason to keep this application open?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then I'll close, uh, public hearing 2805.02.
I'll make a motion to, um-
Approve.
Approve, thank you. Public hearing 2805.02, a special use permit to obtain beer and wine permit located at 111 Hazard Avenue.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, uh, discussion. Uh, John has given us, uh, things, and a lot of it pertains to, uh, is this an expansion? To me, personally, I don't see it as an expansion, uh, because it's between the four walls of this particular restaurant, you can't add any more chairs to what he has that's, that are there. He's serving presently the same material that he's asking for a legal license for, and, uh, I don't see that it's gonna be intensification, it's there already, he's not gonna have any more people in the restaurant than what he has in there at present. So, it's, it's not intensification or, or an expansion. The, I don't know, I, I know there was, I believe it was a Fat Belly Deli that was there before, I don't know if they served alcohol or had any, I, I personally have never been into it, I just remember that it was there. Uh, so, this could have gone back even, even further, but, uh, does this have any impact on the neighborhood? To me, it doesn't, there's not, not much in the neighborhood, and, and having watched the ZBA and reading their approval, the, the ZBA, it, it doesn't, it's, the ZBA approval doesn't go with the property, it goes with the Country Diner, is, is my interpretation of it. It, it doesn't change how the restaurant's being designed or used, it's presently serve, uh, it's bring your own beer and wine. I, I think it'd be a little bit safer, because, uh, the applicant would have control over what's being served, not what maybe comes in, but he knows, and having been a past police officer, he knows when somebody's had too much.
So you're for the approval?
I would be for the approval, but I think these are some of the reasons that will be asked, why we've given approval.
I would have to second that, those reasons as well. And if ZBA gives them the blessing, then they certainly have mine, so-
Well, I think the concern there was that we open it up in, in giving the spot zoning, and others could apply for it-
No, but this is just for the-
But this is for this, just this one particular building, because of the circumstances. And anybody else that is in there now doesn't have the change of zones laid on them that the P&amp;Z or the town laid on this particular applicant.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Somehow, I had-
Well, I'm sorry, you're out, we're, we're-
We're voting.
We're, we're in our own discussion. You had your chance.
I was, I was just gonna suggest adding something to the, to the motion, which is to cite the record, uh, the record of the, the public hearing, uh, and to also indicate that, uh, there's a waiver of the site plan, uh, requirements, except for the map.
We are not wa, we are not supposed to waive any of that.
No, we aren't, no.
Well, it is in your regulations. I mean, you really, you really need to, in a sense, because, uh, every application can't meet all of the standards of the site plan.
Well, we'll have to do the waiver after, because we're in the middle of a nomination of, uh, the motion's been made, the seconded, we do in our discussion.
There was no pre-printed motion in there?
Uh, I had, I had a pre-printed motion, and it didn't somehow make it into the package.
Oh, I can't help that. We're in, I'm sorry, but we're in this discussion of- We're in, I'm sorry, but we're in the discussion of the motion. Is there any further statements? Hearing none, call the roll.
Charles Durin?
Four.
Kathleen Sarno?
Four.
Peter Falk, four. Charles Led?
Four.
Ronald Gregory?
Four.
Motion passes 5-0-0. Congratulations to the applicant, and if you, now you said we need a waiver?
Yes, I think it would be wise to have a waiver of the site plan requirement, since this was a special permit with a site plan.
Make a motion.
Well, for a liquor license, he did, all right.
Yes.
Because always, all right, go ahead. Make a motion to waive?
What am I waiving? I'm not...
You're waiving all the requirements of the site plan, except the map.
Okay, so noted.
There's a number we have to use, though, right?
Well, the site plan requirements of section, I think it's section 10.
Make a motion to waive the site plan requirements for section 10.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, take the roll.
Charles Durin?
Four.
Kathleen Sarno?
Four.
Peter Falk, four.
Four.
Ronald Gregory?
Four.
Okay. Motion passes 5-0-0.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing 2813, special permit request to use the Montessori school, relocate the Felician sisters located, for Montessori school to relocate to the Felician sisters located at 1325 Enfield Street. Secretary, please read the legal notice and take the roll.
Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission, we hold public hearings on Thursday, January 8th, 2015, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following applications. Public hearing 2813, special use permit application of the Felician Sisters of North America Real Estate Trust, owner slash applicant, for a change of use, renovation and modification of the former Heritage Building for a proposed Montessori school premises located at 1297 Enfield Street, also referred to as 1325 Enfield Street, in HR 33, District Map 46, Lot Number Two. This notice was published in the Journal Inquirer on December 27, 2014, and January 1, 2015. Roll call, Kathleen Sarno. Charles Led, or Charles Durin.
Yeah.
Alan Dryden, absent. Ronald Gregory.
Present.
Nicholas Apikis, absent. Laurie Long, absent. Peter Falk here. Elizabeth Ballard, absent.
Okay, Commissioner...
No problem, I've been sent off to the bathroom too. Can you, is that on? Is your monitor on?
Yes, ours is on, right.
Wasn't working at HTC before the holidays.
No. I don't know if we wear plants like that, or I... The three of you, you're all on.
Well, we can do the thing.
You can't say hello to your mother, the kid's at home.
My kids.
Yeah, I guess you could. You could entertain them while they're waiting for the others to come back.
It won't be that much fun.
A song and dance, maybe. We should take it to recess, I guess.
There must be a national Montessori song.
You can see that.
Yep. Very nice.
That's my daughter.
What's the emblem on the front? Looks like, is that a four-leaf clover?
That's the Montessori School's logo.
Oh, okay.
Which is not there now, it's just a depiction of what might be there.
Is that considered a sign?
Probably.
It's a separate permit.
Different permit, different permit.
Well, we got one back, so you can peed in. We should've.
It's cold in here, it's getting cold in here.
Yeah, we got a problem with the heat in the building tonight.
I think it shuts down, and it must...
It's got to, it's chilling down here.
Automatically, yeah.
I just got a text from a friend of mine. Saranac Lake, New York, is minus 17, and it's going down further. So we are lucky.
Very lucky.
Very, very.
Minus 10 at my house last night, so...
I beg your pardon?
We were minus 10 at my house last night.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, it was, yeah. We got that all night long, just running.
We had minus 4.
Furnace ran all 12 hours.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't, I don't know where she is, I didn't dare show her. Okay, we're all back. I think they got the heat in the garage toned off, my feet are frozen.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, if you now will introduce yourself, we're all back.
Certainly. Peter Bachman, Principal at J CJ Architecture, Licensed Architect in the State of Connecticut, and we are Architect of Record for the Enfield Montessori Project.
Jeff LeBeau, Civil Engineer, Licensed in Connecticut with Freeman Company, Sub-Consultant to J CJ Architecture.
Steve Burgess, Project Manager, J CJ Architecture, I'm a Connecticut Architect Registered.
If I speak like that, you can hear me?
Yes.
Great. So we've assembled a bit of a presentation. Much of it is in the documentation you've had already, in order to calendar this hearing. We had a, we sat in front of HTC on December 17, and Chairman Totoian and the group approved this application with one small suggestion on their part, which we've incorporated into drawings, which we'll show you, and we will resubmit to you for the continuance of this. We expect it to continue, but if it didn't, it would be great to. We had an art meeting yesterday downstairs, and Mr. Branton and Mr. Pagini were both there, as well as others, and...
We just have the notes from that. Did he give you a copy?
We have a copy as well, thank you. So perhaps I should just proceed through this?
Please.
Okay. So I imagine you're all familiar with the site, so we're not gonna, but I dropped in the site plan, because the trees were obscuring it on Google Earth. And then this is a copy of the existing condition site plan that you have in your packets. And as you probably know, the intent is to move the Enfield Montessori School from the other side of Enfield Street, Route 5, onto the campus of the Felician Sisters, into the building that's here to forebend, known as the Heritage Center. And I imagine you're all familiar with the building and the school. In order to do that, one of our primary concerns has been integrating parent vehicular traffic, and the sisters' traffic, and those other uses on the site. So you'll see here a proposed site plan. And what I want to point out to you, the place where this is different than the one that's in your packet, is in the top left-hand corner, where the existing hardtop road extends out to the corner of South Road. And in your packet, it does not show that being removed from the gate northwest, but at HTC, the suggestion was made that, why don't we take it all the way? So the intent is, and this drawing will be refiled through your agency, to remove it entirely. And that will, the road will be removed, and will be seeded, and in front of the gates that are currently there, two stone pillars, bronze gates will be closed, and a nice planting will be put in front of that. We are, however, introducing a new road, more or less perpendicular to South Road, set back quite a distance from the intersection with Route 5, and that will be an ingress and egress for parent drop-off, and certainly for emergency vehicles, including fire protection. Mr. Shirley has reviewed this. Based on his commentary yesterday, we've widened a portion of that road, which was at 18 feet, to 20 feet, and that is the other place where this will differ from the drawing that you've seen, and is part of your packet. So you will drive in from South Road, I'm pointing here, but you know, but you'll drive in from South Road, and you will proceed around that cul-de-sac loop, and it is not indeed a cul-de-sac, because it joins the existing road system of the campus, but during drop-off and pickup, there will be orange cones to keep parents from proceeding through the rest of the site. And you'll loop back around and northward out to South Road, and proceed to work or home.
Actually, I lost a picture of your map, but...
Well, we did down here.
You lost it there?
Not on our screen, no, I don't know, no, they did. That's the control.
So it's also, hard copy is right there.
Right. I have a question, do buses go in there at all?
No, buses, to the extent that there are buses, the buses will be coming through the other, maybe you want to address that. Go ahead.
To the rear.
Yeah, they're coming in the more easterly entrance off of South Road.
It would be better for you to go up there.
And through the parking lot?
Turn it on.
Jeff, can you hear me? Okay, again, Jeff LeBeau. So the buses are coming in here, is that correct, Peter?
Yep.
Okay, so this, here's Route 5, this is South Road, so this is the second entrance from this intersection. The buses will be coming down this way, which will have ample space to turn around in this expanded parking facility here for a drop-off, and then a turnaround, and then exit out. This is primarily for parent drop-off.
So the parents and the buses will be separated.
That's right.
Correct.
That's right.
By a whole building.
Right. Okay, move on. And this is a graphic that simply demonstrates what I said with words a moment ago. What you'll also see here in, so red demonstrates the parent drop-off circulation, the heavier black or dark charcoal lines indicate pedestrian, new pedestrian surfaces, so that there will be, there'll be sidewalk to receive kids and families as they drop off and walk to the school. It also extends the sidewalk out to the circle in front of the chapel. The other thing, the other thing that exists, actually, let me go back one, the other thing that exists immediately to the north of the Heritage Center, is we are putting in six angled parking places.
So that would be over here?
Yeah.
I don't know why that monitor keeps kicking out. So the six parking spaces Peter's referring to are angled parking right here? So as parents drive down through the teardrop, drop-off here, if they need to run in, they can park in one of these spaces, just north of the actual drop-off, park here, walk on the new sidewalks to enter the building.
And this drawing has accommodated additional dimensional suggestions that Mr. Pagini had forwarded to us ahead of time, and we talked through at the ART yesterday. One of the suggestions that came through at ART, and is part of your packet, was that we have some existing, we have some new drainage proposed for the eastern parking field, which we're expanding by 25 spaces, and it was suggested that we take that new drainage and run it under the easternmost road that currently exists on the site, so that when there is drainage, it doesn't go over the road, but rather under the road.
Right, I saw the engineer's comments, that he didn't want it going over the road.
Correct. So essentially what we did, I can just chime in on that, since I did the drainage design, we pretty much kept the same design point where the existing was, but I agreed with the engineer's comment to go underneath this driveway road here, and then discharge down here to a stable area. That way, you won't have any sheet flow, or freezing, or dangerous conditions at that point.
Okay. And although, many of you probably drive this every day, it certainly doesn't look quite as green as it does in this, but this is just to give you a sense of the feeling for the campus as you come southward along Route 5 from the intersection of South Road. And that piece of, that piece of macadam that's there is the one that HTC suggested that we remove. And as you move...
That's gone off the cam, okay, we'll just get back in a second. There you go.
So, oh, you've got it back now?
Yes.
Okay.
It's up.
Okay, I'll do it fast, so it doesn't disappear. So that's that. Then you move a little bit further southward, and there you see the Heritage Center off to the right, and a little bit further southward. What's interesting about this, and is that we've done a roadway, Jeff and his firm have done a roadway design that roughly mimics the elevation of the existing roadway design, that is to say, the front, the former town green, which is what this is, rises ever so slightly, about 2, 3 feet, as you move eastward toward the existing in-campus road, and we're keeping that elevation, so as you drive by, it will not be more apparent that there is something else happening there. You're familiar with the exterior of the building. There are some building changes that are taking place, albeit quite modest.
The sign's gone.
Beg your pardon?
The sign's gone.
The sign is gone, because it isn't there yet.
It's existing.
And the car isn't there either, right now. But the railings that you see there, those balconies, you may not know this, but those are egress balconies from the stair tower. You come down the stair tower to that first major floor, and then you process out left and right, and down and out, and those railings, of course, are not code compliant, and as this is going to be a school, and because code compliance is mandated, we are replacing those railings. We'll show you what those look like in a moment. The lower level, which is currently storage rooms and mechanical spaces, and a couple of occupied spaces, will be a toddler, that two rooms immediately left and right of that stair tower will be toddler classrooms, and we are sawcutting new windows and doors into those massive concrete walls.
That was my concern, going over the plans, that they, yeah, when you use the basement, it's the exits from the basement.
Correct. And the toddler, and the toddler program, as a result, has direct egress out to the level of exit discharge. And we'll show you what that looks like, but this is a little more color to it. We are also enclosing the base of that stair tower, and we are replacing all doors on the building, both for function and handicap accessibility. We are, within the scope of this project, and not the entire campus, but within the scope of this project, we are replacing the lighting standards on site, and the fixture is approximately the second one from the right, if you can see that, but it will not have a banner brackets, or a banner stand, or banners. Can you see that? I don't know what's going on over there.
Yes.
All right. And they are, indeed, they all have baffles for full cutoff, and meet the dark sky requirements. And this is our, this is our technical drawing for that, but I'm sure you can read every bit of this, right?
Well, it's close.
I certainly can't, but what it's showing you, the photometrics is showing you, that we're meeting the one-foot candle at egress, and zero-foot candles as we get proximate to the site perimeter, and certainly at the site perimeter, we're at zero-foot candles.
Cut it in here, too, we saw it in there.
Beg your pardon?
It's in here.
Yeah, and it's almost that hard to read in there, too. But it's there, and that's what you're looking at.
They're on property, anyway.
Then this is looking, then this is looking at the building itself, and the lower drawing shows you how we intend to cut windows and doors into that concrete base, and the upper drawing, this is the north facade, the upper drawing, if you look at the far-right corner, shows you how we intend to infill at the base of the existing stair tower. Is that clear? And with the exception of those pieces, very little is being done on the exterior. You know, this project is... You know, this, this project is really about providing good, strong educational space for the kids. And you'll see what that means. Oh, here's the railing. So the existing railing is, is white metal, kind of aluminum. The new railing, code-compliant railing, is going to be white metal as well, but it will be stainless steel. And that's a picture of what it will look like. And now, I'm just going to take you through the three floors of the building, just very quickly. Stop me if I'm going too fast, please. This is the existing floor plan of the building. The far-right third of the building floor is, is all mechanical space. The, the front of the rooms, the, the left side of the drawing, which is west, is some storage rooms and some, and then a long room at the bottom of the drawing, the south side, that is the only room that has, currently has daylight into a, into a very, very large open light well. That light well, as you can see, and this is the future state, will get a, will get a full code-compliant egress stair so that there is a egress out that, out of that room from that level, but also egress out from that room through the hallways, out to the front, to the west, at the, again, at the level of exit discharge. If you, if you see in, in Mr. Pekini's notes, reference to wanting to talk to the building inspector, the building inspector has still a question about that room and the appropriateness of egress, and we're working that through with him as we speak. But we're, we're absolutely confident that it is code-compliant.
It is code compliant.
The, the two rooms then that are far to the west or to the, to the left of that drawing are, are two kindergarten classrooms.
You might add that the stairs heated.
Oh, and that the, and that the stair itself...
Well, I don't know, if it's you or if it's the operators down below aren't switching it on for us, I don't know.
Well, I welcome you to this side of the table.
Well, shoo it down there because it's warmer down there.
It's also warmer, yeah.
You know, if I jiggle this connection, does it help? Did that do anything?
No, no, no. No, it's, it's all right, it's there. I, I think there...
Well, picture if you will. So, so, and then this is what, this is what one of the element, this is what one of the lower-level classrooms will look like.
Yeah, that's nice.
Right. On the floor above, if you've been in the building, you know it's a, there's a large double-height space in the center. And there are offices and other kinds of spaces around it. That's what this is showing you with a very large stair at the center going up, a grand stair. That stair will remain, that large double-height space will remain. And you can see here how we are arranging classrooms in each of the corners of the space. And, and this is what that double-height space will look like.
Oh, that's nice.
Yep. And this is what one of the classrooms facing west will look like. In fact, if you look out through the windows, you can see the new railing.
Mm.
Right.
That is nice.
Love that railing. Love that railing. So on, on the second floor, this is what the plan is currently. And there will be additional classrooms on that level. And again, that's what one of those classrooms might look like.
That's...
And it is a, for those of you who've been in this building, it's a remarkable building. It is really very much a period piece, but it is not, it's not a school. And I think the work that we've done with the Montessori School and the Felician Sisters has really produced what will be a beautiful school.
Looks nice.
So with that, that's discussion.
Questions?
Questions.
Now, now you gotta come back. Well, you don't realize, we're over, I think the, it's an unheeded garage down there because my feet are...
Yeah, that's correct.
I need foot warmers. Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
I assume there's an elevator, I think I saw that on the plane.
There's an existing elevator which we are replacing completely to provide adequate size for handicap accessibility.
Okay. Does that also take into account if an ambulance came with a stretcher, it would fit in there?
Correct. Yes.
Correct.
So they have some revision, they have to revise that plan something, right?
Ask John, I guess.
There's some revisions that they have to make on the plan?
Are there some revisions?
That are going to have to be made on the plan?
Yes, there are.
Well, he had mentioned some tonight.
Yeah, some of them, I, I don't know to what degree you were able to accomplish the revisions, but...
Most of them.
Most of them, yeah. I think most of the major ones had to do with, you know, fire lane width.
But they'll have to be rechecked and everything too.
Yeah. And, you know, there were, there were a few other, I mean, there were a lot of issues that were just raised yesterday.
Some really not prepared.
No, they're not prepared at this point because what we need to do is to get these plans to, you know, to the various members of the ART and have them respond with memos, file memos.
It's a, quite a nice project and I imagine they're quite, it'll be quite a change to go across the street into that facility.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
I don't know what the current enrollment is and what the capacity of the new facility is versus the current enrollment.
That's...
Are you building to expand or is it just to accommodate what's already there?
That was, the figures were in here someplace.
Figures are in the mirror.
Uh-huh. People on television can't see that.
Yeah.
The, I think the enrollment is approximately 175 currently. Currently, and here's 25 faculty and staff. And that's what the current enrollment is.
So are you sizing this new facility for that population? Or will it accommodate more?
It's, we're sizing it for that population. And the reason it's apparent, I mean, it's apparent to everyone, this is a bigger building than they're currently in. But they are, they have a long wait, the school has a long waiting list. And they are actually, they've exceeded their ideal class size, anticipating that a year from now, they can just, they'll move into and expand into this building.
Mm-hmm. So it's being designed for something bigger than what they currently have so that they can take more students?
The, the head of school is here, if she can address that directly.
Well, when I open it to public, if she can do that, and it does give her a, well, she's on TV, so it'll be in the home, so it does give her a little chance to have a little public relations, I guess.
I want to see you go through all this effort and then outgrow it next year or the year after.
Understood.
Taking into account what the future may hold in store for the, the school itself.
Understood.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I just bring up one issue? We've, we've documented an issue involving bicycle pedestrian access. And that's a, that's a financial issue for them, but it's also an issue that, you know, that we really can't push because it is not, there's nothing in our regulations that requires, that requires bike and pedestrian access, except you have, you know, you can require a sidewalk not less than six feet wide, but it has, it may be located in a landscape setback around a building or at a street right-of-way. And that is the only reference to sidewalks. There is no reference to bike paths or anything of that nature. So although it would have been nice, it is not, not a requirement of the regulations. And, and so it's our recommendation that, that we not pursue that.
Okay.
Okay.
Ride the bike sideways sidewalk.
Well, they do anyway.
Well, one thing you, one thing you'll see as you get the revised plans is where we are removing that last little curved section that goes to the intersection of South Road and Route 5. Currently, there's a curb cut that accommodates that road section. When we remove that, we will be restoring that section of sidewalk that does not exist now.
If you look at this plan, it's right over here.
Yeah.
So once they remove this, we're going to restore pre-conditions.
That, that brings up an interesting scenario. Are there students that walk and bike to school?
That's what I was going to ask, how many?
And typically now, they're going to be on the west side of Enfield Street. Now they have to cross Enfield Street to get there. What sort of safety accommodations are we taking into account to address that?
We're not, we're not aware of any students or teachers or administrators who walk to the school.
Mm-hmm. Everybody's bus or parents in cars.
Parents in cars. Okay, anything further? Let me open the public. Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against the application? Please go forward and give a name and address for the record. A few gentlemen will vacate the seats. If there's a question that is, arises, you're welcome to come back and address it.
Good evening. My name is Cleona Bolio and I am the head of school for the Enfield Montessori School. I should probably spell that name for you. It's C.L.I.O.N.A. And the last name is B.E.A.U.L.I.E.U. Good Enfield family. So I just want to address the question as to the enrollment. We actually have 125 children enrolled right now. And our plan to move into this space is not really to increase our enrollment considerably. The space that we're in right now is very, very cramped. We have, we have five classrooms. We have one room that functions as a library, a gym, a staff room, a kitchen, a PPT room, a speech therapy room, and whatever we need to have it as.
It's a multipurpose room.
It is, it is, I call it the symphony because it's so well-managed. And so moving into this space, although the space is much bigger, it, it actually allows us to, to work with our program in a much better way. We do intend to add some toddlers, so that part will increase our enrollment, but that's something that our families are crying out for, looking for spaces for their little ones. So I did want to do that. It will also allow us to configure our classes in a more Montessori way. Some of our classes are not configured the way Montessori would prefer just because of the space requirements that we're in, and this will allow us to do that. Bussing issues, we only have one bus that comes to the school and it is one of the smaller buses. So the bussing is not a huge issue. Most of our children are actually dropped off at the school. We, we have quite a lot of Enfield children and we also bring in children from other towns as well, which, you know, we just think is great to come into Enfield and, you know, bring, bring all those children into Enfield. So, so that's good. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your, for your attention to this.
Thank you.
It's very exciting for us.
Anyone else would like to address the commission at this time? Yes, sir. Please come forward and give a name and address for the record.
My name is Roy Nash. I live at Two Quail Hollow. I'm a Montessori grandfather. I'm just going to come up here and tell you something you already know, that this is an extremely wealthy, I guess, I know, I'm not, I don't mean wealthy. It adds wealth to this town. It's an extremely valuable resource. It, it provides choice, it provides diversity, it provides an extremely caring atmosphere. It's, it's something that's an absolute asset to this town. And I think anything you can do to facilitate the continuation of this organization would be a great benefit to this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the commission at this time? Anyone else would like to address the commission at this time? Last call for this evening to address the commission. Do you have anything to add or then we just continue? John, what's, how are the dates on this? We got plenty of time, right? Okay.
You have, you have plenty of time. You can, and it can either be the 22nd or February 5th.
Well, we, if there's more material, what's, what's the...
Would they be ready for the 22nd?
Yes, we'd have no trouble getting our documents complete and submitted by the 15th, which is the...
And you have enough time to check?
And I will have enough time to, my report.
Motion to be in order to continue till the 22nd.
I make a motion to continue public hearing 2813, special use permit request changed for the, for use for Montessori school and continue it to the January 22nd meeting.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Take the roll.
Charles Stewart, Kathleen Sarno.
Four.
Peter Fall. Four. Charles Led.
Four.
Ronald Gregory.
This hearing is continued then to the 22nd.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Nice presentation.
Just curiosity, where else is the nearest Montessori? Isn't this quite far away?
There's a Montessori in Windsor, which only goes through kindergarten level. There's a Montessori in East Line Meadow, which also only goes through kindergarten.
Okay, but that's out of state, so...
And then there's one in Simsbury that costs four times what we do.
Okay, so it's quite, it's unique.
Nothing found?
Okay.
The Montessori in Severn?
No, the Montessori in Severn.
No. No, that's why I said, we're, we're, yeah. Old business, none, huh? New business, none, other business?
None.
Other, other...
What motion do you want?
Administrative approvals?
None.
None?
None.
None?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Wake up!
He's operating the chart.
Sorry, I have two issues here. One of them is Mayfield. And what they're proposing to do is to, is to put in four, I think it's four, four, no, no, not trees. They are irrigation and buildings, okay? They're for the irrigation system, they're eight by eight, no higher than, than 10 feet. And...
Thank you, I have one, but thank you.
And I have some maps here that show this.
Good evening, stay warm.
There's also a very minor modification or movement of a, of a road intersection. And...
If it's, these are buildings that they're putting in for irrigation?
Yes, that's all.
I'd like to see locations. I don't know.
No, I have a map that shows all of this. If you'd like, each one of you could like...
Well, not tonight, I don't want to see them.
Okay.
No, I can't, it's so cold, I can't, I can't concentrate.
Pay your taxes so we can get some heat in here. I mean, my feet are...
So you'd rather see them first before you make a judgment?
I think that, well, or, well, let them come in too. You've got others than that? Is that only one part of Mayfield? You said something about a road.
Well, there's a, it's a very minor change in the location. It's a matter of eight feet and it's because there is an electric manhole that cannot be within the road.
Good night, thank you.
It has to be off the side of the road, so they had to shift it slightly.
Well, how do you, then what are the groups allowed to, it's up to the...
My recommendation is that if you, if you give authorization to staff to do it, that we, that we...
I'd like to see the location of these sparkler things.
What?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I have, I can show you, I can show you the location right on here.
All right. Go ahead.
But they're changing the road size and everything?
Oh, no, no, nothing like that. It's so minor, it's, it's, okay. This is, this is the road shift right here. Okay? That's it. So it's very, very minor.
What, where was it?
It was, the red indicates the shift. Okay? It's just a very minor shift because of, because of a manhole.
It moved west.
Right. The manhole.
And, and the buildings that they're talking about here, these little structures, one here, one here, one here.
Do you have a design of the little structure?
What they, what they've said is, we don't have a design, but they, what they've said is that they will use the materials that are, that are used on, on the buildings themselves. The roof pitch will be comparable to the buildings themselves. And the materials of the roof...
What's the size of the thing?
It's going to be eight by eight, no higher than 10 feet. With, and the doors, you know, the door.
Like a shed.
It's like a little shed.
By 10 feet?
Yeah.
They got to put their stuff in there, so...
Okay.
Well, it's, it's actually, it's actually the house, the, the well pump.
Pumps.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's, that's what they...
Are they going to, they're going to pump out of the aquifer?
They're, they're going to pump for irrigation.
Yeah, out of the aquifer.
Got a monster aquifer under there, so...
Might as well.
And so, and so what's-
They're sitting on top of it.
Yeah, if you would, if you would authorize-
Does that come out of the Aqua-Fur Protection Agency? Need approval on that?
Uh, no, because, because this is, this is not an act, I mean, you might have to have a, a, a letter basically saying that it doesn't require a permit, but it's-
Well, I don't know, because-
This is a residential, this is a residential development, and again-
Yeah, but it's almost a commercial pumping out of the aquifer, I, well, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I'm very familiar with, with the regulations, and they deal with, with hazardous, hazardous materials.
Hazardous, right.
And so, you know, this is not subject to it at all.
Okay.
So, so, you know, what I would, if you would authorize me to, to, to grant this permit, I would, I would make this design, and, you know, and require it as-built, you know, subject to the approval of the town, of the town engineer, and I would also make it a condition to have all of those, you know, all of the designs that we had just talked about, all of the design features to be consistent with these buildings, and we'd articulate it in the approval.
Okay.
So it's, it's, I think it's relatively minor.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
Okay, okay.
I know it's hard to deal with on the, on the fly like that when you're-
Yeah. The, the only reason I asked about pumping out is because I read about what's going on in some of these communities in Maine, where these mining companies, and the land is going down.
Yeah. I'm afraid that the Aqua-Fur Protection regulations don't deal with that issue.
Bill?
From soon.
But the water's going right back. The water in the lawn is just seeping right back in again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Other than what evaporates.
They're there, they weren't, I know, they're flooded with bottles. I think, uh-
Have to make a motion to authorize them to do that?
Yeah, more motion.
Or adjourn?
I have, I have one other thing.
We wanted to make a motion-
Do you want to make that motion first?
Yes, please, do it.
To allow you to do executive, administrative approval for those minor changes to Mayfield.
Motion's made and seconded, I'll, we'll just take the handoff.
Yes, well, pay right.
It's done.
I did second.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other issue. Right, thank you. There's a gentleman by the name of John Moran. He has a recording studio.
Down Pearl Street.
Pearl Street.
Right.
And what he'd like to do is to, is to sell some merchandise related to, to, to music, you know, and that, that kind of thing.
He's done a nice job on that.
In a small portion of, of the area, basically eight feet by 20 feet. This whole, the entire facility is only 600 square feet, and the types of merchandise that he would be selling are related to, are related to, you know, what he does. So it's clothing with musical themes, it's musical accessories, it's albums.
This is inside the current building?
This is in the current building, only in the, at an eight-foot by 20-foot area in the front. And it's guitars, guitar strings, drum heads, musical music equipped.
Then why would he, why do you need approval on that, John?
Well, it's a, I, I just, what I need is to, for you to agree with me that this is accessory, basically, an accessory to the, to the principal use. And you have done something like this just recently with my gym?
Yeah.
Where you allowed that kind of thing to happen.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we've done it before.
So, if you want to make a finding that this is an accessory use-